Good evening. Sorry about the short delay. I'd like to reconvene the public session. And will City Attorney, please give us a report of actions taken in closed session?
Thank you. There was no reportable action tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Colin. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Kevin Bash, and then if you'd remain standing for the invocation, from Pastor Santiago from the Beacon Hill Assembly of God.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening. Scripture reference, 1 Timothy 2. "I urge that prayers be made for all people and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior." Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected and appointed officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. Almighty One, I thank you for this meeting today. Lord, there is an agenda, and we ask that your Holy Spirit lead and direct all discussions that take place during this council meeting. I pray that you will use the skills and abilities within each of our council members and participating citizens to accomplish the tasks set before us. Help us to remain positive in all decisions made and to maintain peace and goodwill towards each other. God bless our great city of Norco. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. So good to see you again. Okay, I'm going to call upon Isabel Hendrickson, the Norco Fair Vendor Chair, who's going to tell us all about her program, the Norco Fair Committee to Read to Ride. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Norco City Council. My name is Isabel. As most of you know, I'm here on behalf of the Norco Fair Committee. I'm honored to be asked to present for a second year in regards to Read to Ride. It is no big secret that reading levels nationally greatly suffer since the pandemic. According to the NAEP National Assessment of Educational Progress, they have reported a five-point average score decline in reading levels. This is the largest score decline since 1990. Children are our future. Something as simple as giving children a fun opportunity to help increase their reading levels is one way to uplift them. What is Read to Write exactly? So this is a program that's in partnership with the Riverside County Library System that we started as of last year. So through the library, they're able to sign up on a Beanstack app that the library also uses for other events. And what they do is it's a point system, so for every summary they turn in, they get a reward in return, which is the ride tickets at the Norco Fair. So we, as a fair committee, do pay for those ride tickets. Woody Shaved Ice is also one of my sponsors for a second year in a row this year. I have also been blessed to add Reds Baked Potatoes. So this year, the kids will get a Shaved Ice reward for how many summaries they did and completed. Reds Baked Potatoes, they will also get a little food ticket for Corn in a Cup. And then what we're adding new this year is a raffle. So for each kid that goes and picks up their prize, they will get a raffle ticket with the Junior Fair Committee this year, where one of their options, Woody Shaved Ice, also donated a skateboard for the kids to enter into a raffle with some other good prizes. Thank you, Manta, for the Norco swag for our raffle. So yeah, so it's for kids ages pre-K through sixth grade. It is ending this Friday. Right now, 27 kids have registered. Last year, at the end of the program, we hit about 67. So this year, due to it kind of being going on late, we didn't get as many kids. Yesterday, the library emailed me and said that we had 37. So we're about half compared to last year. I'm hoping, we've already, they kind of had a change in their leadership over there. So what we're hoping for next year is that it's going to run on autopilot and that will already be ongoing. I'm hoping to get involved with the school district to see if we can outreach to them because school did start, so we're hoping that it picks up a little bit more. But it ends on Friday, so. So here's our incentives. So as you can see, for like one summary and it goes up from there, they can complete eight summaries. So on this Beanstack app, it's more so that they kind of text a summary, so it is geared towards the kids a little bit. And then Woody Shaved Ice, he will be there. Reds will be there. Crafty Mama, another one of my vendors, she's donating some tumblers for the raffles and for the kids. And that's it.
You've done a great job with that program.
Thank you.
You really have. Does Council have any questions, comments, anything? Okay, Izzy.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job. City Council reports on regional boards. I'm going to start with Councilmember Bash. Kevin.
I just want to congratulate Bonnie for getting her award. It was very nice, and I see her family. I didn't know they existed. So I thought that was really cool. It's funny, we got a picture with her, Fia, myself, and Greg, and she said, okay, now my family. It was like, so we kind of got dismissed. It was nice. So I really, it was really a pleasure to see you win that, and you did well, well, well deserved. The college, what we did at that meeting actually was kind of important. They spoke at length about the new building that's being built. They're going to put in a new kinesiology lab, which is pretty cool. But also, right next to the new apartment complex, they're going to be building a four-story building over there, too, that's in the works. So it's going to be very weird over there. It's going to be like New York City or something. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Fia?
So on August 12th, I went to the RCTC Rubin Cutting Ceremony at the Moreno Valley Marchfield Metrolink Train Station, which was really a wonderful thing to be at, to see the new platform that they have. And it'll be great to get folks going places they need to go. And on August 13th, we had a very long and very productive RCTC Board Meeting. There was just a lot. A lot of legislative updates, and we got an update by Caltrans. And one thing that would kind of affect Norco is extending the I-15 Express Lane into San Bernardino County, so past the Galliano Ranch Road. So that's in the works. And then August 14th, I went to the RTAT Now Meeting, and ridership is up. And youth ride free, 18 and younger, through December 31st, 2026. That's on all fixed route and Go Microbuses. And also, there is no bus service on September 1st, 2025, due to Labor Day. That completes my report.
Thank you, Fia. Greg?
I didn't have any regional board meetings, but that'll be tomorrow. I'd like to thank Bonnie again. It was great to see you up there. And it was a pleasure going out there and honoring you to getting that award. And we had the fair meeting. It's getting, oh, dark 30. It's about ready. Everybody's getting their ducks in a row, and it's going to be a great year. And then me, Robin, and I don't remember who else, the city staff and the Sheriff Department, they put on a really good e-bike seminar. And I talked to people as they were leaving. And what I did like is the way the deputies in the Sheriff Department said, you know, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to come up to us and we'll answer them, or we'll help you. And that was really good to hear. And by the way, it's a two-way street. I mean, there's, we got to watch out for them, and they got to watch out for us. But thank you, guys, again, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Greg. Robin?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Robin? No report on any regional boards here lately. The only note was met with Amanda, Sam, and Chief Otterman, and the consultant on the heli hydrant locations. We've kind of, right now, we're just looking at two possible locations, both in the vicinity of the golf course. And we'll keep moving forward till the next step. So that's all I have to report. And we'll move into public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding the consent calendar, legislative matters, or items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please submit a speaker card to the meeting clerk. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the governmental body's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters and that the time such comments are made. The governmental bodies shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. Our first speaker is Tara Young.
Good evening, Tara.
Hello, everyone. So tomorrow night is the scoping meeting here in the chambers from 6:00 to 8:00 to discuss the Wiley Lab site. I know it's not a public hearing, however, I do just ask that we do a livestream that we have on our YouTube channel. And the only reason why is just because it helps with maximum transparency for our community, because some of the chatter online, you know, a lot of people have questions and stuff. And I know that it's just a scoping meeting at this point, but it helps people understand the process. And I certainly would like to be here, but I can't because I have my daughter's back-to-school night tomorrow. So, but anyway, and it also helps fabricate public comments as well. So I'd like to hold off on submitting my email public comment until I continue to analyze everything that I see. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bonnie Slager.
Let me guess.
Go ahead. Take a real stab at it.
I'm stumped. Evening, Bonnie.
Again, thank you, guys, for nominating me, and thank you, Kevin, and Fia, and Greg, for being there that day. It was a very nice event. Yes, it's almost fair time, and if you haven't gotten your fair buttons yet, I just happen to have some for sale. And I think I can beat the price that you're selling them. At least meet the price you're selling them at City Hall. So $15 upfront, 20 bucks at the gate, so please get your fair buttons now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
No further comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, moving into the consent calendar. Do any council members have any items they need to pull? 3C? 3C? Yeah. Any others? Not hearing any? I'll make a motion to approve the remainder? Second?
Please vote. A motion passage unanimous. Thank you.
Councilmember Bash pulled item 3C. This is a recap of actions taken by the Planning Commission at the August 13th meeting. Kevin?
Yeah, Almey just had a question on 5A. I understand that didn't pass. Has the applicant made a move, has he made a move to appeal that?
Not to my understanding.
And so the deadline has passed?
10 days after the Planning Commission Day, so that would end this, let's see, 10 days, 23rd?
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. I make a motion to approve this particular item.
Second?
Please vote. Motion passage unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, we're going to move into the discussion action items. And I'm going to call upon the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a recruitment for one appointment to the Planning Commission seat, which is an unscheduled vacancy. This term would end June of '27. We did have one planning commissioner that resigned his seat. The requirements per the Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22.0.0, is you must be a citizen of the United States, be a resident of the city, student or employed in the city, be at least 18 years of age, be registered to vote, take and file with the clerk the oath required by Section 36507 of the California Government Code, and no felony convictions. The recruitment began with a notice that was released by my office on July 23rd, 2025. The deadline for applications was August 11th, 2025, and applications were received and provided to council for review. The process this evening would be the applicants are invited to speak for up to three minutes each to introduce themselves to the council. Council will vote to either A, appoint an applicant to the Planning Commission this evening, or direct the city clerk to schedule a special meeting for interviews. If council proceeds with appointment at this meeting this evening, I will provide a ballot to each council member to make the appointment. The appointee must receive at least three votes to be considered. If the council decides to direct city clerk to schedule interviews, the council members will provide a list of their top three candidates to the city council within 48 hours of this meeting, and the city clerk will reach out to applicants with an interview date within a week of this meeting. The city clerk will notify those not chosen at this time for interviews via email. Note, all applications are kept on file for one year for consideration for other vacancies. And with that, council, do you have any questions at this time?
Does Council have any questions? No, you may proceed.
Okay, so at this time, I am asking the council the motion they'd like to make to either appoint this evening, or would you like to have me schedule interviews with your top three applicants? What is your pleasure?
I'd like to hear the speakers first.
Okay, we can do that.
Is that all right?
Excuse me, yes.
Yes, please.
Our first speaker will be Tara Young.
Good evening again.
Hello again. So as you know, I did apply to renew my seat. However, you guys chose to go a different way. So when this position came open again, I was like, well, maybe the universe is telling me something and I need to reapply. So I'm going to take a little bit of a different route. I'm going to tell you a little bit about my background for those of you that don't know. I previously was a licensed roofing contractor, so I had my C-39 Roofing Contractors License and C-33 Painting and Decorating License. So I closed my roofing company in 2023 because I just, I was not passionate about roofing, and I didn't want to be in business anymore with my ex. And I decided, time to start something new and fresh. So I also studied architecture when I went to college, so reading plans and doing all that stuff is second nature to me. I currently work for Tanya Bambrook. She is one of the top-selling real estate agents in this town, and I love working for her. I am her executive assistant, and I help with all of her home staging and marketing, and basically whatever else she wants from me. And so we promote the lifestyle here in Norco. And if you want to go on social media, you can go on Life in Horsedown USA, and I've been uploading a lot of the videos I've been working on there about listings and about our lifestyle. I'm also starting up my coffee business again, and I just haven't gotten to Farmers Market yet, but that's in process. Horsedown Coffee Company will be up and back at the Eat Center Farmers Market probably in September. I was hoping to shoot for August, but I'm going for September. So why do I want to be on Planning and Commission? Because I loved it. I'm experienced. I know what it takes to be on commission. We need somebody who knows how to fight the game from Sacramento. And of those of you that know me, which pretty much all of you, know that there is no other person who loves to fight government overreach than me. So, so there's that. And I really believe that we need to be in sync with council, and I had pushed for that joint meeting that you guys had in July because that was something I felt needed to happen. So we're all on the same page when it comes to the general plan that's coming out that we're all currently working on. So I really want to be working in unison with you guys as much as possible. And lastly, I'm not afraid to say no. And I feel like my experience on Planning Commission, it's like, we have to be tough, and we have to be, we just have to be tough. And there's a lot of things that I'm like, I'm not afraid to say no to anymore, and really use my voice and my experience on Planning Commission to be able to speak up and say, look, this is not great. So, and also, too, I just want to represent my community. It's the citizens and the people of Norco that I am here to serve, and that is preserving our lifestyle and fighting and doing whatever it takes to preserve the Norco lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chamberlain.
Good evening, all. How are you?
Good evening, Dan. How are you?
Good. I don't need this thing, I don't think. Well, my name is Dan Chamberlain, and just to give you a little bit about me, my wife and I moved here 22 years ago to seek the cliché lifestyle of, you know, the quietness. As a pastor alluded to, you know, peaceful and quiet community. That's where we wanted to be. So we moved here, raised two kids while we were still here. Been worked all my life. Most, my background in work is primarily management, management slash customer service. So I did that for close to 50 years. In January of this year, I said enough's enough and retired. So being as a working man, your obligations are to home and family and all that stuff. So I didn't have, I didn't feel I had extracurricular time to give out, but now I do. So I don't have the experience that some probably have as far as the Planning Commission and those types of things do have. But I do have the drive and the initiative to do it and to do it to the best of my ability. So if you select me, let's get working.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denny Hutnick.
Evening, guys.
Evening, Denny.
By trade, I'm a disaster, a senior disaster specialist with the federal government. I think I got retired. I'm not sure. The administration hasn't decided what they're doing with us. But the, I've built, well, I've put not only townships, cities, counties, and states back on their feet after a natural disaster comes through, and worked with not only planning commissions throughout the country, worked with the city building departments and state, full-blown state agencies, and learned how to not take no for an answer. You tell somebody you're going to rebuild this because the taxpayers are paying you to do it, they don't give you an excuse to say no. You just say, well, you want to say no? They got those funny little bracelet things that, and they take you away. But anyway, I've been here for 47 years, living in the old part of Norco, watched a lot of things happen throughout this town over the years. Watched projects change, stuff that I went along with, stuff that I didn't go along with. But changes change. That's all there is to it. I found out that in Norco, you can't just say no. You got to say no because. You always have to follow that up with because. You can't just say yes. Okay, we can do this. Well, why? Why can you do this? We found that with a lot of projects throughout Norco, where they were just given yes, and then all of a sudden, the bottom fell out, and they went, oh, well, guess we shouldn't have said yes to that. But anyway, what I'm, I'm out here to do a job. I worked with streets and trails for eight years, and found that to be really a rewarding experience. The problem there was the government decided to send me to the East Coast, and I sat there for the next few years. So ended up with my term with streets and trails. Anyway, that's who I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Denny.
Our next speaker is Robin Van Geest.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Robin Van Geest. I'm applying for the, one of the positions on the Planning Commission. A little bit about me, I will be very brief. I'm a retired registered nurse, retired last year. So now I have a lot of time on my hands to dedicate to the, to the to dedicate to the, to the city. My family and I moved here in 1986, so we've been here for quite a while, raise two children here. One of, one of them still lives here in the city of Norco with her two children. We are very horse-oriented people. I have horses, my daughter has horses, we all have horses. So I want to keep Norco true to the Norco Horsedown USA, that's my goal. I've also seen, like the other applicants that have been here a long time, a lot of changes happening in Norco, some very good, some not so good. My goal moving forward would be to keep Norco moving forward for the benefit of the town and the benefit of the people, because without the people, you're not going to have the town. So basically, that's just me. I know a lot of people in the town, I'm very, very active with animal rescue. So with the animal rescue, if everybody comes to me, so, and that's just for dogs and cats and wildlife as well. So working towards my license to become a licensed rehabilitator in this city, so that's one of the goals. That's all I have.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Our next speaker is Dylan Wimpel.
Good evening, Dylan.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to apply for the Planning Commission position. The reason I'm here is because I'm passionate about the city of Norco. It's the only place I've called home for the past 30 years. The only thing I want to see less than change in my city is the failure of my city. I closely follow many of the developments at Sacramento level regarding ADUs, zoning, and other land use issues, and I see the way that Norco could be using them to protect itself without opening itself to liability. I represent a portion of Norco who loves it, but can't afford to live it. I have made every effort to represent people who feel they don't have a voice and reach out with community outreach. Currently, I run the Community Corner at the Eat Center Farmers Market, where I offer activities for kids and open conversation for anyone who stops by, happy to discuss anything that is going on in the city, going on in their lives, and making Norco an accessible place. I believe Norco is somewhere where we should know our neighbors and know our neighborhood, and all work together to grow it in a way that maintains what it is. I look forward to serving at your pleasure and looking forward to any conversations we may have in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we did receive an email from Kenny Munich. He had to attend a family emergency in Chicago, and he just wanted to reaffirm his strong commitment to serving the community of Norco. He is, he's moved here almost a year ago, drawn by what makes Norco so unique, its sequestering heritage, rural spirit, independence, and close-knit community. After years in Chicago and Palm Springs, they knew that this was the kind of place where they wanted to put down roots. Professionally, he brings decades of experience as a real estate operator, small business owner, and operations executive. He's scaled companies, managed multi-million, multimillion-dollar property portfolios, and worked closely with municipalities on permitting and compliance. He knows how to bring people together, navigate complex projects, and deliver results with integrity. He's worked across industries, also understands the value of aligning business interests with community values, something I see reflected here in Norco. And as a resident and neighbor, and someone eager to serve, he brings not only professional experience, but also a personal commitment to community collaboration and good governance. And it would be an honor to contribute that to Norco's continued success. And he said, thank you for considering his application. And then the last one was James Rowe. He did have an emergency with his son this evening and said he'll withdraw his application at this time. And there's no further comment, Mayor.
No other emails?
No other emails, thank you.
Does council have any questions, comments? Or what would be our pleasure? To either vote or to interview? Robin? Kevin?
I'd like to do interviews of all the applicants.
Okay, so not all of the applicants, the applicants that came to speak. Okay.
I'm the same. Would you like us to, I know your direction was to put it to like three or four, but...
It's at your pleasure, Mayor. So if you'd like to make a motion, as Mayor Pratim Grendmeyer and Councilmember Bash stated, of interviewing those that are here this evening, we can do that also.
I'll make that motion, but I think each council member could put just one to interview, two to interview, or all to interview.
If that's what you would like to do.
I would.
I would like to interview all the people that are present tonight, personally.
And that's fine.
Is that your question? Did I miss something?
No, but if...
Is that your, is that your motion?
No, there's, there's one, two, three, four, five. Five people, right?
I'd like to interview them all. The Planning Commission is...
Make the motion.
Oh, okay, I make a motion that we interview all people that are present here tonight, applying for the Planning Commission.
Motion in a second, Dana.
So you'll be voting to, on the motion to interview all applicants that attended the meeting this evening.
And before we vote on that, okay, this bothered me. The last time we did interviews, that we did it where there was an audience in public, and I felt that was out of line, it was uncomfortable, I think for council, it was uncomfortable for the applicants, and I just don't like that approach. Can we change that?
So if a majority of council is going to meet to discuss and interview a person for Planning Commission, we have to do it as an agendaized meeting. It doesn't come within the employee exception, employee doesn't count for appointed or elected members of legislative bodies.
We have to do it in the public, Mayor, as a special meeting with public comment also at the beginning.
I don't like it.
The only way around would be to do a two-two-one, but then you wouldn't all get the benefit of the interview, and you can't discuss it between different groups.
But whoever you select becomes a city employee.
Not in the same manner as the Brown Act allows an employee evaluation. There's, there's, I believe it might even be specified directly in the Brown Act, but it doesn't apply to persons on legislative bodies.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if that's going to make you feel any better, but it's uncomfortable being on Planning Commission, so there you go.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I just thought it was awkward.
It is. And a lot of times, you can ask voluntarily that people respect the solemnity of the process. We've had other cities do that, and then maybe one person will come in and sit in on it, and there's, you know, there's nothing we can do to kick them out. Maybe somebody from, generally speaking, one person may, nobody may, and if, if one person who's interviewing for the position decides to sit in while you've asked them to respect the process, you can use that in your consideration of who to select.
Okay, I just wanted to make that.
It is awkward.
Got it. All right. Dana, you have a motion in a second?
Yes, please vote.
One of them.
Can I get your vote, Mayor? I'll ask. You can, I, okay. And motion carries.
Yes, good evening, council.
Want to talk about development standards?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, council. This agenda item 5B is a discussion item, discussion item on establishing development standards for conditionally permitted land uses in the A1 zone. So again, this item is a discussion on establishing appropriate development standards to address building size and our lock coverage for non-residential agricultural, conditionally permitted uses and/or buildings in the A1 zone. So, so there is a list of conditionally permitted land uses in the A1 zone, and those, most of those uses are not residential, so the purpose of this meeting, the intent of this discussion item, is to address the lack of standards and to increase the compatibility of these uses in the A1 zone. So the origin of this item is a result of the council directing the Planning Commission to have a discussion on this matter and provide a recommendation to the city council. The Planning Commission did review this item at their last meeting on August 13th. So the Planning Commission took a look at the conditionally permitted uses in the A1 zone, and they did note it, it was pointed out that there is an absence of development standards specifically addressing these type of uses. When uses that are conditionally permitted, like for example, maybe, just an example, golf courses, churches, the underlying standards are used to assess the project. For example, the setbacks, the lock coverage, like for example, in the A1 zone, lock coverage is 40% of the flat pad, front yard is setback is 25 feet, side yard is 15 and 5, rear yard is 100 feet, and then of course, you have the height limit of two and a half stories or 35 feet, whichever is less. And, and these standards are set so they apply to more of a residential animal keeping uses and not really to your conditionally permitted, non-residential uses. So you can potentially end up with a non-residential building with a size and bulk that negatively impacts, has a potential to negatively impact residential neighborhood. So that said, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council consider the following, and these are just recommendations, of course, planning, city council has the ability to discuss more, consider it, consider what has been recommended, all with what I understand is direction to potentially come back with a code amendment to establish some kind of standards. So the Planning Commission recommended that the city council discuss maybe possibility of increasing, for example, the side yard setbacks. Right now, the minimum side yard setbacks in the A1 zone are five and 15. The city council could consider increasing that to a minimum of 25 feet on sides. Building height could be considered, maybe establishing a height limit of lower than what's allowed, addressing maybe the lock coverage, scaling down the lock coverage to possibly 25% or whatever, you know, the, the city council determines is appropriate. One interesting thing that was brought up is rather than addressing the development standards like the lock coverage, the setback is introducing, addressing the massing of the building specifically, where there are no changes to the development standards, but where the project is broken up to smaller multiple buildings that don't exceed, for example, 10,000 square feet. And in addition, you introduce a graduated setback based on the height. In other words, the taller the building, the further away from the property line it has to be. So that was, that was an interesting approach that the commission wants the city council to consider. And lastly, it should be spelled out that the architecture needs to match the community or the immediate neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, for example, the building stories and building material. And again, those are just some recommendations that came from our Planning Commission. The city council obviously has, it's within your purview to discuss other items in addition to what is before you. And with that, I will conclude. This is a discussion item. I'm here just to receive input and get direction on whether we should proceed with a code amendment. And with that, I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Does council have any questions, the staff related to the item as presented? Kevin?
What exactly does, what does character of the neighborhood mean, architectural character? I mean, we have a lot of different, I mean, right now, we're working all that, we've sort of settled on a, I don't know, what does that mean? Be more specific.
Well, yeah, specific character, I mean, basically, I mean, it deals with, if you have nothing but single-story buildings, maybe the building should be limited to single-story. If there is a ranch-style design, then the building proposed needs to incorporate that type of design. It should fit into the community, fit the character of the neighborhood where this potential development is going.
And we would list those things?
That's, that could be a possibility.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions? That's fine, we can do that under discussion. Then Alma, question, but not one item in particular, on the, the use, the non-residential uses that are permitted in the A1, can those uses that are listed either be, how do you add or reduce those uses?
That is definitely an option that would take a code amendment as well.
And that would be just a code amendment?
A zoning code amendment, zone code amendment.
On a zone code amendment?
That would go Planning Commission and then to city council.
Okay.
A charter issue.
That would be a charter.
Absolutely.
Issue, okay. But it can be done?
That's my understanding unless...
And then I need a reminder on graduated setbacks, and just if we can use our accessory building setbacks on like a 25-foot, oh, first question, height of building, is it to the eve of the building, or are we doing the ridge of the building?
It's, it's to the eve, the, it starts at the eve.
Okay.
And it's kind of hard for me to explain, but as it gets taller, the setback has to increase.
Right.
Yeah.
So what I wanted to clarify was, the height of the building is the eve height, not the height of the ridge, the ridge line.
It starts at the eve, it starts at the eve. So let's say, for example...
The setback, so if it's eight foot tall, let's say, at the eve, it's a five-foot setback for conversation.
Correct.
With a two-story, when that gets to 20, 20 feet?
Mm-hmm.
What's that setback?
When it gets to 20 feet, I mean, I need my calculator, but for every foot above eight feet?
Okay.
It's an additional foot and a half over...
All right, so it's a...
In addition to the five feet. So once you...
It's a one to one and a half?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it. I couldn't remember that, so...
It's one to one and a half, yes.
All right. So every height, every foot in height, kick it another one and a half.
One and a half, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for questions right now. Dana, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, Terry Young.
Hello again. So I want to just throw at this idea. When I was reading through that list, I'm like, there's a lot of things in there that I wouldn't want on my street or across the street from me. And we've recently, recently seen that play out with the Hillside Church. But can we even go further and be a little bit shrewd on this? And what if we take away everything on that list? And I don't know if this is a question for legal, but can we take away everything except obviously what's grandfathered in, like churches on Corona, like they're already here, so obviously that's something that we can't change. But can we just not entertain some of these things that are on that list? But can we just not entertain some of these things that are on that list and just take them out so it kind of creates a little bit more, is this a little bit cleaner? And just keep agricultural zoning agriculture, and that's it. That's all I have to say, is just a suggestion to throw out if that's even possible to eliminate some of those things and clean it up that way rather than deal with setbacks and all that stuff, which still is good. Like there's, some of the suggestions are good, but let's even go even, go even more shrewd on this and get a little bit cleaner, I guess. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments, Mayor?
Thank you, Dana. Okay, we'll bring this back to Council for discussion and action. Kevin? Did you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. So per the Speaker's comments, public schools historically are always placed in neighborhoods because neighborhoods tend to be a safer location and they tend to be centralized to the people who live around them. I can't speak to private schools because we own one. Day nursery is the same, the same thing, but one of the moves in California is the creation of home daycares as a means of employment for disadvantaged women. That's a huge push. Public golf courses, I don't think we're at risk of having a public golf course put anywhere, although you may well find yourself with a nine-hole golf course, perhaps at the Norconian, it's possible, also tennis club, swimming club, other recreation facilities. And technically, what is, what is that zoned, the prison?
Preservation and development.
Right, okay. Restaurants, we tend not to put those in A1 anyway. In fact, I was kind of surprised that those are in A1. We do have some that are in A1, I believe. We have the one, isn't that A1 over at the corner of Crest Lawn and?
No, those are actually, it's CG.
Okay, but there's like, there's a house behind it. Churches, we can't exclude churches from, we can control the architecture, but a church can go anywhere it wants to go. Temples. Public utility uses, what does, what does that mean? Public utilities, does that mean like Edison comes in and just tells us what to do? Yeah, basically, I see people shaking their head, all right, so we can't get rid of that one. Governmental and civic uses, we have our own public works yard in the middle of a neighborhood. I'm not anticipating that we do another one, but yes, it would be grandfathered. Hospitals, sanitariums, there are no sanitariums anymore, convalescent and rest homes, can we ban those?
I'm going to defer to Colin on that.
Because right now, we have quite a large development happening up on Crest, Crestview.
For convalescent and rest homes?
Yeah.
So some you can ban if they're big enough. The state has a, the Welfare Institutions Code has a list of houses called community care facilities. Community care facilities are, depending on the facility, facilities for the disabled, seniors, that type of thing, and the amount of people in the facility and whether they have a permit. If it's six and under for certain things, and they have a state permit, required by state law to treat them like any other residential, single-family use, so they can go in, we can't ban them. We have to treat them like regular house.
Right.
Or other uses, we can zone them.
So like, for example, when they go in, they do all the work, and then they, we find out it's going to be a rehab facility, we can't ban those either?
So oftentimes, they've done their homework, they realize they can only have six residents and one live-in manager, and they have a state permit, and there's nothing we can do about them?
Institutions of philanthropic nature, I can't even think of an instance like that. Do we have any like that?
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah. Athletic sport and recreation uses, again, we have parks all through the city, would that be regarding private?
It's private. It's regarding private.
So if somebody decided to have a batting cage?
Yes, it would fall under that.
But they would be grandfathered in? But they would not, now, what if somebody decided for their own use to have a batting cage in their backyard?
Well, for their own private use, where you're not coming, you know, getting, having customers come in, I mean, as long as they follow the zoning criteria.
There's only one in Norco batting cage I know of that has customers come in, and they were grandfathered in, they've been there so long. Small and large animal hospitals, where Horseshoe USA, it would seem to me that's a pretty good use. Sales yards limited to agricultural commodities, livestock and farm implements. I don't really personally see anything that we can ban. What do you think, Alma?
It's entirely within the, for the most part, it's not too many, as you mentioned, but there might be a few in there, like recreational uses maybe, but that's entirely within the purview of the City Council.
Kevin? Just my comment to that was, was it possible to add or delete-
Right.
-from that list? Not, not any one in particular that I have angst about.
I mean, I like the suggestions. The only thing I'm not real comfortable with is I'd really want to spell out, architecture should match the character of the neighborhood. I'd really like to see that spelled out. But I don't have a problem with the setbacks and stuff like that, and I really don't have a problem with the uses. That's all I have.
Okay. Fia?
Well, because you have so many different lots with lot sizes and shapes, I mean, it's really hard to kind of do a one-size-fits-all for a lot of these properties. That's where the struggle comes in. I do like having height restriction and larger setbacks, for sure. Possibly a, more of a scale, depending on the lot size. Again, I mean, there's just so many things to take into consideration just because everything is so different. But height, for one thing, and also the, limiting the size of a building also is something that I would consider. That's what I have at this time, it's still kind of-
Okay. Greg?
I'd like to see some verbiage in there for our barns. There's a lot of confusion, especially on my part. I'm, I was looking at it, and I was like, the highest requirements, I was gonna, I'm just gonna jump on my little bandwagon here real quick. Before they changed everything, I had a barn that I was going to put in my backyard, and it was going to do the five-foot setback, but it didn't make the new requirements. And so I wanted a nice-sized barn to put in my backyard. Well, when everything changed with the new, I couldn't no longer do that. It met the requirements on the side but not on the back. But with my lot, of being a half-acre lots, and they're narrow, I'm limited in what I want to do. And what I've seen, and I've been here a long time, I see the city and the City Council pick away at people trying to put a barn in their backyard. But I'd like to see some verbiage in there to where we can, we can protect the barns when we vote this in, because I don't see anything there that's really, we're going after like the church that wants to come in and put this big monstrosity, but I get that. But we need some verbiage in there to protect the animal keeping because, and I might just saying it for myself, and I'm part of it, but I'm, I'm talking hundreds of people in Norco say the same exact thing. Norco makes it too hard to put animal-keeping barns, and they feel like they're chasing animal people out of Norco. I feel that one before I got on City Council, because I want to put a barn in my backyard, all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, they just voted it out, I can't do the one I wanted. I wanted a nice, be able to pull my trailer in the middle of it, you know, have two stalls on either side, and I would take the stalls out and put everything in the back, but then I don't read their height requirement on the back because I wanted a nice barn that would look like this. And I live on the flat ground, it's not going to block anybody's view, and I just like, I just, I can't do it. And I know I'm self-serving, but that's what I want. At the time I was doing it, I could have done it, but then they passed it. But I'd like to see some writing in there that protects the animal keeping. And I get the highest requirement on, on one side, but it's got to be able to work both ways, because if you have a, your lot's restricted, and you go to push it all the way in the back, so you still can turn your trailer around, because I'm going off my own personal, and there's, my neighbors are the same way, because we all have the same similar lots. And it's really hard to build something that you really want to have in your backyard to, you know, you want to pull your trailer in the backyard, you can't put a cover over it, or instead in the middle of the cover, or work on it. And I, I'd just like to see some verbiage in there for, to help preserve the rights of people trying to put barns and stuff in, that they're going to say, oh, well, you can't do that because of the highest requirement. I like to redress all that stuff because, I'm telling you, I get people all the time complaining about, I can't put a barn, and I'm, it, it's, it's just too tough. And by the time you look at all the permit fees, the, everything, before you even break any ground, you got, you're spending $15,000 to put in a mare motel, a four-stall mare motel, and you haven't broken any ground. And you could not put a mare motel in the back of your property with a five-foot setback because of the highest requirements. It's like we're shooting ourselves in the foot, but we need to be more specific for animal keeping. That's all I'm getting at. I'm through.
Robin?
I'm not sure if this is an Alma or a Colin question. So a conditional use permit, a developer is coming in and asking for exceptions, is that correct, to like what we normally would allow? Or the purpose is, because a conditional use permit, the purpose is for-
So conditional use permit is, so you have types of zoning, one is permitted as of right, we don't even need to look at it.
Right.
It's okay in this zone, and there's not permitted. And there's these things in the middle that should go in the zone, but because of the uniqueness about it, we need to make sure to put some conditions on it to mitigate the impact on the rest of the zone. That's what a conditional use permit is. We look at the specific operation and say, we're going to put in these four or five conditions to make sure that because of the specific nature of what's going in here, it's not going to spill over to the neighbors. The request to get waivers from zoning is a variance.
So a CUP is discretionary, correct? So it is not required to be granted under any circumstances, is that correct?
It's a discretionary program.
Okay. So... I somewhat understand the purpose for having this discussion. And some of the, the items that might have brought this to light, where we needed to have the discussion. I agree with having it spelled out about the architecture, but I'm just, I guess I'm confused as to where maybe some of the overlap is on this, on development standards and general plan and all the things that we're already doing, and why we would need to put more into the conditional use process, because I'm, if it's a conditional use process and there's something that we don't like, we just add it as a condition, and they would have to do it, correct? And we can make whatever conditions we want.
Correct.
So we already have the power to do all the things that we're asking to do here in the current process as it exists?
As long as there's a nexus to the reason you can deny. And there, there is because it's broad, because we say health, safety, and welfare.
Mm-hmm.
Because of that, it catches just about everything.
Okay. Yeah, so that's where I'm, I'm conflicted, because I don't want to make more rules and laws in a system that people already says is built on rules and laws to make it hard enough for people to do what they want to do with their own property, especially when the conditional use permit gives us the power that we're really asking to have, we already have it. So unless I'm like mistaken or not understanding. So if we want it to be a certain height, we can say it can be a certain height. If we want it to have the architecture a certain way, it can have the architecture. So when we talk about it being spelled out or doing the thing, are we doing that to make sure that we know what it's supposed to be? Are we doing that so that an applicant knows what the expectations are, what it's supposed to be before they come in? I'm just, I'm confused.
I think maybe I know where you're going on that, if I ask Alma a question.
Sure.
That on side yard setbacks. So right now, it's 15-foot on one side, five-foot on another. Okay? And so this is on a property that comes in that is non-residential or agriculture, right? On these exceptions. Can we conditionally approve or make that condition that we want the side yard setback greater than what our code would say, the five and the 15-foot?
You, you can. The, the area to capture that is in the initial review part, you know, just to make sure that when, when the project comes to the, you know, to the dais or to the, you know, to the, either the Planning Commission or City Council, if you're not happy with the setback that's being proposed, rather than conditioning, you could have the discretion-
I guess, I don't know if this is where you were somewhat confused that if our side yard setbacks for any A1 house, it's five-foot on one side, 15 on another. Okay? If it, if the, if it is a structure that has to be conditionally approved, can those setbacks be increased?
Yes.
They can?
Yes.
Okay. So we could, because that's one of your questions, I think, in, when you were asking for direction, was to go to what, 20, 20 feet on one side?
And that was just a suggestion, just a-
That, yeah, your, your 15 and your five, would you increase that to 25 feet?
That is definitely up for discussion.
That's one of your, one of the Planning Commission recommendations.
Yeah, and it's just a number, I mean, it could be, you know, get bigger or smaller.
Right, but that 25 feet could be changed conditionally to 30 feet, 15-foot on each side, right?
Yeah, and, and keep in mind, yes, yes. Keep in mind, there are also other development standards that need to be adhered to-
Right.
-like parking, you know, all that comes into play as far as that dictates the layout of the, of the building.
Yeah, I'm trying to go through this as, here's the Planning Commission recommendations, and you're asking for direction on that. Or I'm taking it that they are also.
Okay, but where is this going to go? Like, I don't understand, so we're going to write another section of municipal code that applies only to CUPs? And then we're going to pull numbers out of the air, and it might apply to a case that comes in, and it might not, and it might not fit the property that we're talking about? Like, we are literally, in my opinion, putting ourselves in a corner or in a predicament where we're going to be fighting with somebody that wants to develop their property, and we've made it so ridiculously hard that they can't do it, and then they're here in front of us, and we're nickel-ing, diming some project like we've done in the past, where we already have the flexibility to make things work based on specific circumstances to the unique properties that we have in Norco.
And that's the discussion, if, if we want to have another zone code amendment.
No.
And, and I'm getting with you on that, Robin. So just for informational, that, so I ran some numbers, one of the other recommendations by planning was to, just make the lot coverage 25%, right? Reduce on a sliding scale depending on the lot size, simply 25% of the total area. And sometimes I've popped off on that, in some cases, just going, just make it 25% and just build whatever the hell you want, right? So just for an example, I think what started some of this was the Hillside Farms. So, and I just rounded it off, and I took it as basically a five-acre parcel, that if you were to take that square footage of that lot by just 25%, you could build a building that was 54,450 square foot. What was the size of the church that they were proposing? Somewhat pretty close to that. So even if we were to reduce percentages on those larger properties, the end result is not going to be any different. Where it starts to impact, you know, the majority of us with half-acre lots, you would be limited to 5,400 square feet, as far as your total coverage. So- As, as far as your total coverage. So that doesn't work. And then it gets back into the whole, every lot is different. No cookie cutter stuff. Um, I think at this time, I don't, I don't see where a zone code amendment is warranted. I disagree with some of my colleagues on some of their comments, which I think we could discuss in private and not, not out in the open. Um, but i- if that, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll ask everyone else, if that's the direction you're looking at as a zone core, direction, if a zone code amendment is warranted.
Was there a desire to have an easier way to tell people no? Like honestly, that's, I'm wondering what it was. If it was just, because there, it does take a certain amount of fortitude when you're looking at somebody that owns the property, they want to develop the property, and you just have to tell them no. And it's not easy. And it's not fun. But I'm just, I'm trying to walk through the processes and, and why this was requested and, and I will go back to, yes, it's the Hillside property. And it's okay to say no. And it's okay to say it doesn't fit. And come back with a better idea or come back with a different use. And I don't think putting more layers of stuff is going to stop that.
Is that even for a church? Do you can say no?
If they didn't fit, oh, well, but we could do the architecture on a church, correct?
Yes, except for not through a CUP. CUPs are difficult because you're using discretionary standards. When you use discretionary standard for a church, then you have to go through a loop and it becomes a big hassle. You can call it an assembly use and then have architectural standards for an assembly use that aren't discretionary. You can say no, no assembly uses of above three thousand square feet in the A1.
And if they're going to have a school, then you can hit them on architecture.
The school portion.
Right. But I think a lot of this was brought just because of the, the uproar of some folks on the church on Hillside Avenue, right? Which is an allowed use.
It's a mandated use per the federal government. It's, you cannot stop a church.
So you can, you can zone assembly uses in certain places. The issue about not being able to stop churches is when they, church moves into a building that's already allowed in the zone, and that's when things get dicey. We can, we can say no assembly uses of a certain size in a zone. We can do that. We can't ban churches across the city. And it's very difficult to take a structure and say that the use going on in there is prohibited because that's where you get into the speech issue. So yes, Councilmember Bash, what you're saying is correct. We just, we have some areas where we can actually zone. And it's generally size, structural, architectural issues of assembly uses in zones. And we can ban assembly uses in zones for, for a structural purpose. But people can always get together in a business, they can always get together in a house, and then we have to get into what's going on inside the structure, and that's where it gets to be a problem.
So then this doesn't matter anyways then?
The, the CUP discussion as applied to churches is different, is difficult.
Unless we, and I'd like to maybe know more about that. I don't think we can really do that tonight, but I'd like to know more about the assembly thing, actually. But I'm kind of leaning towards Robin's comments. I, you know, at this point, you know, part of the whole barn thing is the, I mean, somebody who lives next door to and across the street from an aircraft hangar that's made of metal, um, you know, one which is five feet from a property line, and they're huge. Uh, we've pretty much handled that. You can no longer build those big gigantic metal buildings. They now have to match the architecture of the home, correct? Yeah, so they can't build the aircraft. And that's really why we did that with the barns. It was for aircraft hangars. Problem is both were allowed through a CUP. That's my problem with the CUP process. And both actually were not, they're still not in compliance. Um, but I think we've handled the architecture on that. Um, what is a barn? We went through this whole thing. What is a barn? And the problem you have is that you, you want to allow the barns, but the problem is you have people that are saying, I'm going to build a barn. But they're actually not building a barn. They're building something for an entirely different use, the metal shop or something that is actually going to impact the neighborhood. So it becomes, when you're up here, you're kind of going, okay, what are they really trying to, to do? So, but I understand where you're coming from. And then the churches, you already, already answered. Um, so I think that we've kind of handled a lot of this already. I mean, especially the architecture, because now it has to match the, the building. Um, the only thing that I would question that I think has a little bit to do with this is that, is the whole measuring to the middle of the backyard trail. Because you have a lot of buildings that are five feet, they're right on the property line, but they're, they're, because you're using the middle of the backyard trail as the, as the boundary. But other than that, I guess I'm kind of falling where Greg and Robin are. I think we've handled a lot of this. I think we've tightened up the CUP process a little bit.
We, we have in terms of, so, so we want to make sure that we understand that what we're talking about here is the conditionally permitted uses in the A1.
Yeah.
What is going to come back on a separate issue is the annual review of the accessory building ordinance. And that's where we addressed, yeah, that's, that's where we addressed the, the detached buildings.
Yeah.
Residential zones. So that's coming back to the city council.
See what's been working and not working.
Yes, that's correct. So that's a separate issue. Right here, the, the item before you. And, and we're here because, you know, we were directed to take a look at this, is with conditionally permitted uses that are not residentially for the most part. Um, so it sounds like the consensus, you know, let's not, um, you know, do a code amendment. But I don't know, maybe in the future time, we can present some information on what churches can and cannot legally. Um, I don't know, that, that, I heard that came up. So that can potentially come back at a separate time. If I'm understanding, there's no direction for a code amendment at this time.
Any other comments, Fia? You good? We're good? Um, I would say that the direction would be at this time, no zone code amendment is warranted.
Okay, thank you.
Ready to move on? Alma, you get to go again on, um, discussion on establishing a task force to seek affordable senior housing developers. And, and this was an item brought up by Councilmember Bash, correct?
Yes, yes. So, yeah, this is exactly what we have before you. It's a discussion item. Basically to discuss whether, uh, you know, the city wants to have a task force to go and seek out affordable development, affordable senior housing development for particularly, let me go to the site, um, this site here at Fourth and Hamner, near the northwest corner. This is one of the sites, well, sites one and two of our housing element. And combined, it's just under nineteen acres. So the discussion item is if the city council wants to direct or create a task force to seek out, um, senior housing, affordable senior housing developers to develop this site. And I will conclude. And, um, yeah, this is the discussion. And I'm just looking for direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Kevin, I'd like to start with you since...
Yeah, what prompted this is that recently somebody did a flyer and submitted, how many, how many apartments?
Oh, my gosh, it was probably approaching the four hundred or some, at least. It was a lot.
It was a lot. And it was rack 'em, pack 'em. And it was a really ugly, we, they didn't propose anything, so we can call it an ugly development?
Yes.
Yeah.
There had, there was nothing to reflect, you know.
No architectural, so it's coming. And so the idea, and I didn't, I don't like the four hundred and fifty-four homes, that's probably what was linked to the old one. But we have a very successful senior center in Norco. And I got to thinking, well, it's government controlled, it would help us with arena numbers. And maybe what we should be doing is seeking that out before we get another development that's going to come forward by the property. And all of a sudden, we're off to the races again with bonus densities and all those wonderful things that the, that the state of California wants to thrust upon us. And that's really what I was thinking. It's a perfect location for a senior housing. It's low income and it's low income, though, with controls. Um, so I thought maybe just to look at that to see, to see if it's something that's feasible again before we have something thrown at us that we're, we're now having to react instead of trying to be more proactive. I don't want to build anything there, just for the record. But I also, I think too, if we seek that out, we're getting new architectural standards. I think that rather than what we're getting and what Eastville's getting, I would much rather have some control over the property. For a property, by the way, we don't own.
Any questions of staff and/or member Bash?
Just an idea, guys. I'm trying to be proactive.
So Kevin, are you wanting to do how we've done some of our subcommittees where it's like two councilmembers, a staff person, and those people start reaching out and doing some research and doing the homework and bring something forward to the team up here?
See if it's feasible and just...
I don't have any problem doing something like that to, you know, with folks that want to do the work and start looking.
I mean, senior ag community, I mean, there's all kinds of cool things maybe we can attract. I don't know. Gardens, make it a very unique, something that is part of the community. And maybe if we are proactive about it, we can do something nice.
Well, we may have to build another bingo hall.
You know what? I'll tell you what, for every hundred apartments, they get one bingo hall.
Well, I guess we've established who the task force would be.
Uh-oh, who?
Uh, that would be you and Councilmember Bowen. And, but my concern is with staff availability and, and time constraints. And at, at this point, I would like to leave that to, um, our interim city manager to maybe kind of come back with us an idea of...
Totally get it. Totally get it. I agree.
And staff workload.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
And, I'm sorry, and the direction and the goals of this task force. Yes, Robin?
Don't we pay a consultant to help with housing stuff? Like, could the consultant lead the team and not worry about having to put something else on staff's plate or no?
I would also suggest, no offense, because we're already doing stuff like that for the veterans housing, the same consultant.
Oh, are they not?
Well, wait, one question at a time, then. Robin's question. Joshua?
It may not be within their current contract scope, so we probably, I think we have to go out and rebid for that particular service.
So is this our housing consultant you're asking about?
Yeah, I'm just asking about our housing consultant.
We can double check with RSG.
Yeah, can you just check and see?
Yeah, we can check with RSG and see if that is something that they can do for us.
Or no fee, like already included. I don't want to pay extra if it's included in our contract. I know. Just call me Greg Jr.
There you go, okay.
I, I just got one question, um, probably for Colin or you guys. Helping Kevin go for this, how much can we solicit that property without knowing it? Uh, can we go...
That's the reason of the task force is find that out and learn that.
I mean, I'd be all day long going out there, but if I'm stepping on somebody's toes and it makes them upset, I don't want to do that.
Well, that's why staff would set the direction with, with the task force. Fia?
I would love to be on this task force. Reason being is, um, when I go out to, there's more and more fifty-five and older communities now, which I could actually move into now. And I see larger master planned developments. And then there's a, a portion within there that is specifically for fifty-five and older and that type of thing. And there's a few builders that I see throughout Southern California that are doing them. So I would really like to be on it.
Well, we'll, actually, I was being facetious at the time, Greg. So we can, we can determine the membership at a later date. Let's try to get an idea of where we are with consultants and direction and things like that.
Staff will meet internally and, and discuss this and come up with a game plan that we'll report back to council on.
All right. Kevin, is that okay with you?
Yeah, no, I totally understand. I totally agree. Okay.
So Alma, that would be our direction that we're providing, okay?
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's, um, city council and staff communications.
Mayor, we had...
Dana.
A public comment on that item.
I beg your pardon?
We had a public comment on that item.
I apologize.
It's okay. Um, Carrie Young?
I mean, obviously you guys are already in agreement over this. But I just want to add, I'm so much in favor of this. And actually, this is something I suggested a few months ago on planning commission, is just having, um, more affordable housing for seniors like this. Um, I have actually spoken with a senior in town who has challenged to keep up with the cost of living. So I think of our Narconians that cannot afford the million dollar homes or maybe they want to retire. And, or maybe it's the upkeep of these, of the larger properties. Unfortunately, we are seeing a lot of disheveled properties. And there's older people in there that cannot keep up with their homes and their properties anymore. So this type of project would be amazing. And, and Kevin, I'm a thousand percent in agreement with you because it's only a matter of time before we get thrown at us a development that's terrible for our community. And this gives us the opportunity to develop Norco the way we want on our terms. And so again, community gardens, a place where they can have chickens or maybe goats or something like that. And this is a way to accommodate our aging citizens here so they can stay and still live the Norco lifestyle. And they don't have to leave the town that they love so much. And so it's opportunity for that. And then attracting other new seniors who this would be amazing for. And so of course, it's all just about not just doing apartments, but doing something more creative as, as we talked about with the, you know, the gardens and stuff like that. Um, I've also spoken with other people in like neighboring Hoopah Valley. They also have a large lot, but they're aging and they can't take care of it anymore. So there's a lot of people in the area who just don't want to take care of the large lots anymore, but still want to live an agricultural life. So this would be great. It's a win-win-win situation all the way around. So I'm really much in support of this, this task force or this testing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
No further comments, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. So back to, we, we have a direction on that item. Um, council staff communications. Dana? Community services. Alejandra?
Yes, Mayor. Um, just to continue on the topic of seniors, tomorrow is National Senior Citizens Day. So, um, it's a day of celebration at the Roseham Eldridge Senior Center. Just want to invite you all, if you want to come out, um, there's going to be some treats for seniors. And then we'll have some special entertainment as well. Um, it'll be following the lunch program. So it'll be, and it'll be following the lunch program until we close at three. So, um, twelve to three.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam? You got plenty to do. Okay. Colin?
I'd like to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda? Joshua?
I'd like to report.
Alma?
Yes, just real quickly, um, we do have the, uh, EIR scoping meeting for the Wiley property. And just to reiterate that it is just to get input on the contents of the EIR. Um, that's to allow the, um, the applicant to, well, actually, as a lead agency, just for, to allow the, um, EIR to start to be drafted. And after it's drafted, it's got to be circulated for public review. So it's, it's, it's the start of the C, uh, the EIR process. So.
I've already gotten a few emails and a few phone calls. So you should have a lively night, um, tomorrow on that. Councilmember Bowen? Robin? Fia? Kevin? Well, thank you all. Be safe. We're adjourned. Well, thank you all. Be safe. We're adjourned.